We will call the February 3rd, 2015 County Commission meeting to order. Stand for a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scott Guffey.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hannes, Commission Office Manager. At this time, I'd like to respectfully request that you remove item number 20 per the applicant's request.
Are there any other items that need to be removed from the agenda or changed? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda with the removal of item number 20. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Roll call.
Sorry about that.[92.11][92.11](laughing) Roll call vote.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish any of the consent agenda items removed?
I could. 13 and 15, please.
Would you like me to read them, sir?
What's that?
Would you like me to read them, sir?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 20th, 2015. Approval of vouchers in the amount of $193,247.21. Approval of the chairman's signature on the agreement for indigent representation with Dakota Plains Legal Services. Approval of the revision of the price list for GIS services and data. Approval of the request for road closure and traffic control for the DeWitt-Mickelson Trail as submitted by Ms. Emily Wheeler. To accept the official returns of the organizational election for the Pine Meadows Court Road District and issue the Order for Organization and Incorporation effective with the passes of said resolution as presented by the Auditor's Office. Number 11 is to declare surplus of 1993 Chevrolet 3500, single cab, otherwise known as Rescue One, for the purposes of sale as presented by the Sheriff's Office. Number 12 is to authorize the Sheriff's Office to advertise for bids for one used 2013 or newer Ford F-50 chassis with an extended cab dually truck as presented by the Sheriff's Office. Number 13 is to approve the chairman's signature on the 2015 advertising agreement with the Rapid City Journal as submitted by Human Resources. Number 14 is to declare surplus, 1,000 gallon fuel tank and a 500 gallon gasoline tank for the purposes of resale as submitted by the Highway Department. Number 15 is approval of the request for authorization to reapply for the VOCA and the Stop Vawa Grants as submitted by the State's Attorney and the Victims Assistance Offices. And finally, number 16 is approval of the South Dakota DOT Railroad Joint Powers Agreement for weed spraying services as submitted by the Weed and Pest Director.
Thank you. And as earlier requested, item 13 and 15 have been removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that you wish to remove?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove 5, 11, and 12.
Item 5, 11, and 12. Any others? If not, do we have a motion?
Approve the consent calendar with removing 5, 11, 12, 13, and 15, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Item 5. Commissioner Faraby?
The, on page 7 of the minutes, talk about minor plat and subdivision regulation variance. And, I'm not picking on it at all, Karen, but my motion was, and I'll explain why my motion was made the way it was, that was to approve the minor plat and approve waiving of the subdivision regulation requirements as opposed to variance. And I would like the minutes to reflect that. And the reason I stated it that way is variance has a very specific meaning in statute. And our Deputy State's Attorney and I have talked briefly. We'll, he and I will explore that more, and hopefully by next meeting, we'll have a little clearer understanding of what variance is mean relative to subdivision regulation. That's all I have on the minutes.
I need a motion.
I guess I would have the question, and I realize Jay may not have had the opportunity to follow this completely, but if correcting the minutes to that effect changed the implication of the motion, would that be a consideration?
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. The effect will be the same. Waiving whatever condition it was or requirement that the applicant was requesting is the same as variance. So I guess I don't have any heartache over the term waiver, at least for the purposes of the motion that was made. The request to the State's Attorney's Office is to review the use of the term variance and its applicability to subdivision regs versus zoning ordinance, Board of Adjustment versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners. Who can grant variances? When does a variance have to be in front of a Board of Adjustment versus Board of County Commissioners and so forth? So it's a research project that I'm starting to look into right now. But for the purposes of the motion last time, a waiver, I guess I don't have any heartache at this time over that, but hopefully we'll report to you in two weeks what our opinion is on the use of the term variance.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Item 11.
Item 11 and 12 go together, and I ask to pull those for a couple of reasons. Well, the main reason is I like the motion, if we make a motion, to combine the two items as opposed to being separate. And I guess before I make a motion, probably I should ask the submitter to give us some background.
Morning. Kevin Tone, Painton County Sheriff. And I visited with Commissioner Faraby the other day regarding, to give a little additional background, but this is a vehicle used by search and rescue. It's their primary vehicle for when somebody's trapped in a vehicle, they use their extrication equipment to remove them from the vehicle. It's 22 years old, had some mechanical problems. I know it's low mileage, but we need something that's dependable when they have to respond to accidents, and that's the purpose of requesting the replacement. And as I noted in the letter, we have a citizen that wishes to remain anonymous and is going to donate the $30,000, $35,000 to put the box on top of the chassis that this vehicle will provide. So, and as far as combining the motion, I guess it doesn't matter to me. It was a, this is the way we've done it historically. If you want to change it, that's fine, just so we have the ability, what we're asking for is the ability to advertise for a vehicle and surplus this one and, you know, go ahead and, you know, get rid of it. And if you want to do that in one motion or two motion or whatever, I guess it's up to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the sheriff a question. This far on adification, the search and rescue folks are all volunteers, correct?
That's correct. They're 100% volunteers, and they operate under the Sheriff's Office umbrella.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, sorry. I just think it's pretty awesome that someone decided to help you out and, you know, donate $35,000 towards a vehicle. That's well needed. So whoever did that, we appreciate that.
And maybe at some point they'll be willing to be identified and how the money flows, it won't flow through the county. The search and rescue has a nonprofit set up that they use for fundraising as well, so the money flows into that and then be used to purchase the box that sits on the chassis.
That's pretty awesome. Thanks, Kev.
Mr. Chair, the purchase, on the face of it, doesn't meet my frugality test that we took an oath to abide by, but in view of the fact that these folks are all volunteers, I can splurge a little bit. I'll make the motion, move to authorize the Painton County Sheriff to advertise for bids to purchase one used vehicle for search and rescue.
(inaudible)
And to surplus the 1993 Chevy 3500 chassis, single cab, after receiving, and I'll repeat, after receiving a favorable bid for a 2013 or newer replacement vehicle.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I just want to make sure that we aren't setting a precedence. We have always surplussed separately, and I don't know if that matters, but we have always done that, and I just want to make sure we're following an appropriate protocol by using the surplus first. Your motion authorizes purchase before surplus, and I would feel better if we kind of changed that and made it the way it really should be in process.
Correction, my motion is to advertise for bids, not to purchase. Advertise for bids, see what they come in at, and then make the decision. The surplus, it makes no sense to surplus a vehicle until you've got another one in hand.
Are you understanding what we're saying, Kevin, and what's your opinion?
No, I'd like to ask for clarification if I can, and I think Commissioner Troutman raises a valid point. In some cases, we surplus something and use it as trade-in. In this case, we're surplusing this, and it's currently the vehicle's in operation, so we're not going to replace it until we get the new one and get a chassis, or the box put on the chassis, and then we'll replace it. It's just been, historically, we do this all in one visit to the commission to save your time and not bring it back two or three times to the commission. So, again, advertise and, you know, purchase, I guess, is what we're looking for from the commission. If you say to advertise, then we've got to come back to the commission and tell you what the price is. Again, that'd be an extra step, but, and we can do that. I think we've done that as well in the past, but just like clarification on the motion.
So it's not an issue with that? It's not gonna?
In this case, it won't make a difference, or maybe a case where we need to surplus something and use it as trade-in, where then we would be out of sequence.
And then you'd tell us then that we needed to do it different?
Sure.
In this case, it would work?
In this case, it would work.
Thank you, Kevin.
And I don't know about the legal question. I guess Jay can answer that from the State's Attorney's Office, if there's a sequence issue from a state law perspective on surplusing.
We do have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Buscrued?
Aye.
He said aye. I read his lips.[841.82][841.82](laughing) Maybe he didn't hear you. He on there. He said aye. Buscrued?
Yes.
He said aye. Did he? Okay. Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 13.
This was for me. I just wanted to ask Nick a few questions.
Right ahead.
So the Rapid City Journal bid was 15-6, which is $15,600. You have $18,000 in your budget for the whole year?
Correct.
And who do you represent when you're doing job recruiting? Is it just your office or the 340 employees that we have, that you represent?
Sure, I should identify. I'm Nick Stroud, HR Director for Pennington County.
Thank you, sir.
That money goes for all advertisements, so for all the jobs in Pennington County. So both Sheriff's Office and the rest of the county.
So then you have two other newspapers to use, $2,400 for recruiting?
Yes. In this year, we would have $2,400 left over for, as I wrote in my memo, sometimes I call them incidental job postings, job postings that we like to go beyond the Rapid City Journal. And then I believe for this year, the commission office is going to pay the native Sun News bill.
Okay.
But any advertisement for jobs beyond just our contract with Rapid City Journal would be, have to come out of that $2,400.
Have you ever ran out of money in that sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Last year, we went over our budget, I think I put in there $3,684. We went over our budget for that. And what happened is those, we had a highway superintendent job we had to look for, and we had a planning and zoning director job. And when we reached those high-level jobs, it's a good idea to look beyond just Rapid City to try to find the skill set that we're looking for.
Right. It just, to me, Commissioner, $18,000 doesn't seem that much for advertising for 340 employees in what he does. And then I was looking at their training, too, and $3,000 in training, I mean, do all the departments train their own, or this $3,000 for you and Jessica?
No, that is for the trainings that we're putting on for all employees.
$3,000?
Correct. Now each, now the Sheriff's Office does have specific training and certification needs, which is beyond the general training that we provide. I would provide things like, this year, we're going to have to put on an ADA training. That's required by our ADA agreement. Or Jessica and I are working on leadership training or sexual harassment training, things that are required. But each department will have a training budget if they have certifications. For example, the Equalization Department sends their people to school. That doesn't come out of this money. This is countywide training.
So, so tell me, a training is usually what, $5,000, maybe, I guess?
A couple of years ago, we had a really good trainer come in. Malcolm Chapman came in, and he cut us a deal, and it was $3,500, and that was a government deal discount he gave us. But, so yes, training is not being addressed to the level that I would prefer due to lack of resources.
I would say, as, this is my opinion, if you need training and the employees of 340 employees need training, it seems like that we should do more. But I am getting off subject, but I just wanted to bring this to our attention because I am new, and I did see this with the advertising. It was on the same paper, that's why I brought it up. So I appreciate what you do, and maybe we can do better for your budget this year.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, since the other two papers, the Hill City Paper and the Wall Paper, aren't on here, I presume everything is, go with them.
Oh, we, and again, when I have a highway opening in Wall, we'll advertise in the Wall Current, and in the Hill City Prevailer, we haven't done any advertising with them in the past.
Any other questions or comments relative to signing the advertising agreement? If not, do we have a motion?
Can I make the motion? Move or approval of 13?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve item 13. Karen, you don't need that reg, do you?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Item 15.
15 is mine as well. I just request for authorization to reapply for VOCA and Stop VAWA grants. Could we just have, that'd be you.
Yes.
Just a clarification on what that means and what those grants are, ma'am.
All right. I'm Sharon Calamine. I'm from Pennington County Victims Assistance, and the use of acronyms, I know, is confusing. VOCA stands for Victims of the Crime Act, and Stop VAWA stands for Stop Violence Against Women Act.
Thank you. And have you done this before, ma'am? How many, I mean, how many years have you?
Yes, I, actually, with the VOCA grant, this is the 25th year that I'm making an application, and with the VAWA grant, it's the 18th year.
And how much are those grants worth?
Usually, with the VOCA grant, we're averaging about $40,000 a year, and with the Stop VAWA, about $100,000 a year. Those amounts of money are used for salary. One person with the VOCA grant and an attorney and an advocate with the Stop VAWA grant.
Thank you. And out of the 25 years, you've got the grant every year?
Yes.
Awesome, Sherry.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for doing your work and explaining that to me and our commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I may, Mr. Chair, where does the grant money, which federal agency does it come from?
Actually, this is filtered down from the Department of Justice, and no taxpayer dollars are used. These are two pools of money that are paid into by criminals. So we have criminal defendants paying into fines and restitution, and that money then is taken and used for victims in the country. And then each state gets their allotment, and from that allotment, we make application, if you give me authority.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Move or approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, and thank you.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
That ends the consent agenda. We'll go to item 17.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I have an explanation of the abatements that you have, abatement requests that you have before you. These are standard that we do this time of year. They're essentially cleanup. Most of them, state law allows, regardless of how you vote, but the abatement process is the proper procedure to deal with this. The Auditor's Office has split them into two groups, those that went before the Rapid City Council and those that went before the Box Elder Council. Abatement requests for properties that are located within a city or a township have to go there for approval or denial before they come here. That's why we have these split like they are. As for the Rapid City ones, I'm going to run down through this list and just give you a brief explanation of what they are. You have notes, you should have notes of what it is. The Rapid City list starts with enterprise rent-a-car, and budget rent-a-car, and Hertz rent-a-car. Those are properties that were privately owned buildings on the city-owned airport. For whatever reason, the city has taken ownership of those, so they are exempt from taxes now. And the abatement makes an adjustment for that part of the year that they were exempt from taxes. Peter Torgerson, this was an abatement request by the property owner that was granted already for 2013. This is a request for 2014. The commission has already heard that. Kevin Mallon, this is a property where the owner qualified for the owner-occupied classification and was classed as such until 2014. The owners divorced. A deed was recorded. It appears like a sale to our office, and the owner-occupied classification was removed. The property owner was mailed a letter. The normal process took place, but one of those owners still retained principal residence of the place, and it should remain owner-occupied. The Ziegler property, that's a Ziegler Building Center. It burned. The abatement will adjust the assessment of the property for that part of the year the building was not there. The next several, Lewis, Rollins, Rogers, and Maury are some problems we found with our new tax software. We identified what went wrong, and the abatement request here will fix those. We had to go into database, do some searches, and come up with these properties. Of course, there were some that, some property owners that came to us. That's how we found out something was wrong. Then we went in and found the others ourselves. Dawn Barbeau, the property owner qualified for the owner-occupied classification and completed the required portion on the certificate of real estate value. That classification was not applied to the property. That was just a simple mistake on my office's part. Evans, the property owner met all the criteria for an owner-occupied classification, and it was classed as such. Another deed was recorded, a correction deed. There was some error in the first deed. Another deed came through. Again, it appears like the property sold to us. It didn't. I don't remember what change there was on the deed, but the owners remained there in the property. Kennedy, Kennedy, Southside Investments, South Dakota Department of Transportation, those two, those are all properties that were sold to an exempt entity and became exempt from taxes for part of the year, and the abatement corrects that tax bill for that part of the year. That is those there on that list.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
Property owner qualified for 0-0 tech classification and completed the required portion of certificate of real estate value. What's qualified, what is 0-0 classification?
Owner-occupied. I get tired of typing owner-occupied. Evidently, so does the auditor.
Blonde.[1589.86][1589.86](laughing) Sorry about that. I was like, okay, mine just, okay, that was blonde. Okay, keep going.
And if I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, a question for the Director. These have all been through Rapid City's process?
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't noted here, and so I'd ask.
Any abatement request within the city goes to the city first. That's the law, but ultimately, the county has final say on it.
Did they all pass, Shannon?
I don't know.
Oh.
When they, when they go before the city with my recommendation to approve, they, as far as I know, have always received approval, or denial based on my recommendation. But I don't know. It doesn't matter. The commission has final say.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend that we probably do this in two batches, and I think we'd probably, I'd move to approve the abatements for the Rapid City package.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is a second to approve the abatement applications for Rapid City abatements. Any further discussion?
I didn't make a comment to the Director that, as I did last time, about owner-occupied. I'm hoping next year, this will be all cleaned up, that we won't have any of those kind of stumbles.
There'll be a lot less. I can't promise perfection.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I like your tie.
Thank you.[1695.12][1695.12](laughing) Very nice.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Buscrued?
Aye.
Faraby?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman? Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Box Elder.
The next list is the same sort of thing. It just, it is just those that went before Box Elder. The first one there, Chris Sir Janey, this is a mobile home that moved to Fall River County in March of 2012. Everything was done properly. The owners received a movement permit. They paid taxes in advance. The home actually paid taxes for 2014 in Fall River County, so we need to abate the 2014 assessment here in Pennington County. Bricker, property owner qualified for an owner-occupied classification, but he missed the deadline to apply because of military assignment. The law, a grant, the law allows, allows him to miss that deadline and still receive the owner-occupied classification if he's on military assignment. The next, quite a few. Ellsworth Development Authority, all the way down that list. On the next page, City of Box Elder, Ellsworth Development Authority, all the way down, all of those were property that were purchased by an exempt entity. The abatement corrects the assessment for the part of the year that was exempt from taxes. Wayland, this is a property that was classed as owner-occupied until the owner deeded to remove an ex-wife Wayland, this is a property that was classed as owner-occupied until the owner deeded to remove an ex-wife's name from the property. Again, it appeared like a sale. We always mail a letter to the property owners when this happens, giving them the opportunity to provide us owner-occupied information. In these cases, we never received anything back. It's the same as the others. Lewison, this is a mobile home that is in very poor condition and it has no market value. The 2013 taxes were deemed uncollectible by the county commissioners. There's no reason to assume that the 2014 would be collectible. And we have an assessment. The proper thing to do would be to abate 2014 because if taxes were attempted to be collected, they'd be uncollectible and the home isn't worth anything anyways. Teton Coalition is another exempt entity that purchased property and the abatement corrects that for the time it was exempt.
Move approval on the Box Elder abatements?
Is there a second?
Second, evidently Commissioner Busch is not going to enter into this at all, other than voting. I second, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye, roll call vote.
Busch, Rud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman? Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before we move to the next item, in talking about abatements with the Pennington County Auditor, it seems to me that maybe this is, what we're doing is probably not necessary. And I guess I would suggest that maybe she talk with the Deputy State's Attorney and come to us with an opinion for next year whether or not we need to do this. My understanding is that this is totally within her jurisdiction. His abatement process, she and the equalization. Pardon me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
An abatement is a correction to a tax bill. The omitted property that she's talking about is adding property to the tax bill, to the tax roll.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we go to item 18.
Good morning, Denny Gorton, Pennington County Fire. The, this item is the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Act, which has generally been referred to as Title III. It's funds that the Pennington County receives from the Forest Service for logging sales. And these funds may be used only for uses authorized under Section 302(a) of the Act. Part of that Secure Rural Schools or Title III requires that there's a 45-day public comment period. We advertise in the legal newspapers. We did that on December 17th and 18th. And so now we're at the end of that 45-day period for the public to comment. We have to officially open the meeting and have it recorded. That, that's why I have a long motion there, simply to make sure it's in the minutes.
I'm not interrupting, Denny, but Chairman, were we going to take 18 and 26 together? Because they coincide and I-
But we'll finish this first and then talk about the notice that we received.
Thank you, sir. I didn't know if we were doing that, sir.
Any questions relative to item 18A?
Just a little more information. How much in funds do you get, Denny, per year?
Over past years, we've gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars. Those numbers have continued to dwindle down. And I believe last year, the last time we got those funds, thank you, Julie, but it'll take me time to find them. Last year, we got nothing. And in the past, we've gotten, I think the year before that was like thirty-six thousand dollars. Give or take a little bit if I'm close to correct, am I, Julie?
Uh-uh. And here's your last receipts.
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand for the county.
You know, these funds audited?
Roads. Roads received two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Title III. I got my glasses.
Title III received thirty-eight thousand.
Thousand. Title II, apparently, we didn't-
They keep that.
They keep-
Julie, do you audit this or this account or this Title III public in, well, Title III, do you audit it? Or do, does the state or how do they?
On how much we get?
Yes.
No, that's done by the state.
And what they spend it on? The state?
What this, the money comes through the state, no, on federal? No. The money comes to the county and we apportion it, but we do not audit we received the correct amount. There isn't any way to do that.
And Denny, then the state, they basically are the checks and balances of this, what you spend it on, what you can?
No. We, we, we apportion the money according to motions that the commission has made on the split. And then, once the hearings are held, then that money is supplemented into the appropriate budgets that the board has directed it to be spent on. And we audit, of course, those bills.
Thank you, so you do.
Yeah. A certain percent goes to this, to the roads automatically.
Thank you.
And then a certain proportion of it is distributed to the schools.
And how much is, do we, does it save for the schools?
Was two-hundred-and-thirty thousand last year.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
We haven't received our 2014 payment yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments relative to the requested motion?
I just would ask that you make that as a motion that this time you will take public comment. So it's a long motion, I know, but that way it's officially in the records and the state auditors do come in and they look at that occasionally from year to year. And just make sure that we've complied with the law.
Technically, you're saying to make the motion, approve it, and then open it up for comment for?
Yes.
Okay.
You're not approving any expenditure or any budgeting or anything else. It's just to make an official motion to open the meeting for comments.
I would-
I so move.
Go ahead. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I would point out that we will follow this with a discussion of the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination money relative to a communicate that we got from Ruth Esperance. If there's no further discussion on the motion, we'll have a roll call.
Busch, Rud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
If I may-
And now we have to have open comment period, right?
Yes. In the past, we've never received any written or verbal comments.
Once you've held a hearing for the board's information, once you hold the hearing, you can take any public comment into consideration as well as any requests for those funds in the next months and approve them at that point. The only amount that you're approving for is any balance that we have in there plus anything that we've received through 2013. Does this fit 2014 also?
Yes.
And any money that we'll receive in 2014.
Thank you.
We've had some requests come in for that, but we hadn't had the public hearing. So we have to have that. Most of the money has been spent within the county departments at a later date.
Thank you.
Okay. In the back of your packet, you have the letter, email from Ruth Esperance. And then we have the printed budget statement showing the disbursement of the money. But Julie, are you prepared to kind of walk us through that so that if there are questions, they can be answered?
On the form?
The allocation of the current SRS funds, they were budgeted for 2015?
The, there was twenty or twenty-five thousand, if I recall, budgeted, and that was from prior year funds. And there's nothing else budgeted in 2015. So there were funds there to support that request. And that was for actual usage or services provided by search and rescue. This hearing that you're having is for the additional funds that we have. And that will be coming in, if we get any, in 2014. I believe that, that we will. Because that was for the close of the year, ending September 30th, 2014, for the federal government, as well as any balances. So what you're having right now is the hearing to request usage of that money from the public. And you can make that decision today or you can say you're going to discuss it for the 2016 budget. You can get requests from the departments at this time or at a later date to use that. The only requirement we need today is that you have this public hearing. And it gives you full authority to assign the money for these periods further on down the line if you so desire. So it's the board's decision what you spend the money on.
Are you talking about A or B? Because A was, I thought we just finished with A, Ms. Julie.
And this, my apologies, Julie probably doesn't know a portion B in that federal Congress did not reauthorize SRS for 2015. So we have a letter from Ruth Esperance, who's the Mystic Ranger, asking for the commission or wanting to bring it to the attention of the commission, that this isn't going forward. So if you so choose, you can direct us to contact our congressional delegates to encourage the federal Congress put this back in the budget. But we don't, as Pennington County, budget for this because it's a windfall, basically. We never know if we're going to get pill SRS funds.
So what does that mean, Ms. Julie?
The, the hearing that you're having today, you take public comment on, and then the board decides what money we do have or will be receiving. And I believe we should be receiving our check sometime in 2015 for the close of the year of September 2014. This note refers to 2015 money, which we never budget for the money, Holly's correct, until we actually receive it. But we have funds available that you can allocate and spend.
For 2015?
No, for balances-
For 2014?
For the balance that you have and if and when we receive the 2014 budget or the 2014 money. Holly's correct, we never assume we're going to get any money and we never spend the money before we get it. So what your motion, what, what you're hearing today is money that we have on hand through, through our payment for year-end September 30th, 2013, as well as if and when we get any 2014 money. You have had the required hearing and you can allocate it at that, when we get it. Does-
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think we're getting confused here.
We're trying to ride two horses at the same time.
We just need to stop and make a motion to open for public comment. See if anybody approaches the podium and get that part done first.
Get that out of the way because the-
Before we go to item B.
Yeah, because item B is, is dealing with RAC, not with this hearing. And so I was answering-
I know you are, but I mean, it's kind of getting confused here and I just think-
Didn't we already vote?
Yes.
You voted, but-
Now we're on B.
No, you're not on B. You're still on A.
Public.
Well, we need to ask for public comment after that, the motion. I think that was, I understand what, what our fire chief was saying is we have to open it up for public comment. So I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd open it up for public comment.
Trying to comment to, so you knew that you actually had some money to deal with. And what we have, you can allocate, plus you've already had the hearing for if we get 2014 money.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Julie. So Karen, did we vote on that? We voted on the public hearing too?
Yes.
I thought so. So now we're on B.
But we, but we still have to have the public comment, right, Denny? Technically, it's a-
Wasn't any, so am I correct? What does it say in your minutes, Ms. Karen?
You voted to open it up for public comment, but you need to take a minute maybe to see if there is any public comment.
Correct, yes.
Just simply ask the public if there's any comments. And I don't, my office did not receive any comments and I don't know if-
Mission Office does not receive any?
And Holly says she didn't receive any. So it's just simply, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make comment? And if, apparently if not, then we move on to the next item.
That's why I think Lindell moved on to B.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, in, in Denny's letter, the request for public comment was published in December.
December 17th and 18th.
Yes. And so today would be the culmination of that. And is there anyone in the audience that might wish to comment? Hearing none, we will declare the comment period closed. And now we'll move to item B. And Scott, I think you may have some input on this.
Good morning, Scott Guthy, Pennington County, Wheaton Pass Director. Ruth was wanting to be here today and she had another meeting at nine and then she thought she could get down later. But now that you've moved up the agenda item, she's not going to be here. She forwarded this on to me and wanted me to send it on to the county commissioners. So the Secured School Rules Act, the Title I, Title II, and Title III dollars has not been reauthorized by Congress and reverts back to a 1908 law counting for 25% of the funds going to the counties. So what does that mean to Pennington County? Well, it means if you look at that letter from Forest Service Chief Tidwell, the amount of funds going to the state of South Dakota is getting cut by 54%. So you can probably count on our funding to the county being cut by 54%. So if you look at that spreadsheet that you guys were looking at, the last, on the last item, if you look at Title I, that was distributed to county roads. You know, they got 231,000 last year. Well, if you cut that in half or by 54, they're going to get 120, roughly 125,000. And then likewise with the schools, you know, they'll get cut that same amount. 231,000 went to the schools, so they'll be cut by, you know, down to 125,000. So 54% cut. There will be no Title II or Title III dollars. Title II dollars are the dollars that go to the RAC, the Forest Force Advisory Committee. That's formed by the Forest Service through the districts. There's a number of folks represented on that, special interests. Pennington County has a chair on that as well. And those dollars are used for forest health projects. We've tapped those monies in the past for noxious weed projects, mountain pine beetle projects. Last year, we, I think there was 38,000 that was allocated in Pennington County to Title II. I think we got 20, 36,000 of it. About 3,000 is going to noxious weed projects. And then a little over 30,000 is going to our shaded fuel break project that I've brought up, I think in December, that we're working on to do a, basically a shaded fuel break along our county right-ofways, which will not just address pine beetle issue and the dead trees issue, but it'll actually thin the basal down to, basically thin the forest so you got, open it up so it's not susceptible to pine beetle. And also if there's a fire breakout, there's a chance to contain it along those roads. So that's briefly, I mean, I, I got the same information you guys have. I tried to do a little research on what that 1908 act refers to. Not a lot out there on it, but it's good. They're, they're saving money, but it kind of hurts the counties here because those dollars actually went down on the ground to good use. There's plenty of load in the federal government. There's probably other places they could have cut. But as, as of now, it doesn't look like we're going to, that act hasn't been reinstated. I don't know. I haven't talked to any of the congressional reps or their staff to see where they're at on it, if there's a push. I think NACO is probably making a push to get some of those dollars re-secured. Especially the western states, there are some big dollars that went to those states and down to those counties. Anybody that's got, you know, federal lands in their, in their state or their county, it's who it's affecting.
Any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chair, if I might, this pass-through sheet, this is just for Pennington County or this is all of South- or this is all of South Dakota?
This is Pennington.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, Scott, is any of the bills that are coming through, are they going to do exchange of dollars through federal or state money? Meaning, you know, where they would put more money, they would take some away from here on the Title I, II, and III, but maybe exchange for some other funding sources that are going through some of the bills at the Senate and the House right now?
At the state level? Not that I know of, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Chair, just if I might, just, we have this stuff in front of us, and the folks in the audience don't necessarily, but just to repeat, the email from, from the Mystic District Ranger says, "As you may or may not have heard, Congress did not reauthorize the Secure Rural Schools Act." Thank you.
Scott, you may or may not be aware, but the, the position we're in right now with it, this reverting back to the 1908 Act, it's tied somewhat to production, timber production.
Correct.
And do you know whether the impact of the pine beetle has lowered the income?
It's probably increased it, because they're trying to get out in front of the pine beetles, so their production's up, they're trying to thin as many acres out ahead of the pine beetles, so actually production's up. I, I don't know if they, if they narrowed down to production or receipt sales within that given county, or within the whole forest. If it's within the given county, you know, Pennington County's been affected by pine beetle by quite a bit, so, you know, some of our timber sales in the past, our acreages have gone down, just because of the sheer amount of dead trees we have on our forest, within our county. So I, I, I don't know if they split it down by that, or if it's just forced by the forest in general, and all the acres that's affected, so. But the, the timber production's up, price of timber is still not like what it used to be, so that's, that's what's hurting it more than anything.
Thank you. What you wish relative to this issue? Do you-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, in the past, we have sent letters, this is not the first time that this has happened, and, and I guess I think we should discuss whether or not we would like to send letters to our congressional delegation urging them to, to support the funding of Secure Rural Schools.
That certainly, we have that opportunity, and if the commission wishes, we can direct that to be done again.
And just, so the commission knows, I did receive a phone call from one of our school districts yesterday, who was very concerned with this, and as we all know, schools are pinching every penny possible, and they're concerned with the amount of cut that they're going to take, too.
I agree with Nancy on the reauthorization of these funds and sending a letter. I think that's a very good idea.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that, on behalf of Pennington County Commission, we create a letter urging our South Dakota Congressional Delegation to push to, to reauthorize Secure Rural Schools Act, and have the commission chair sign it.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Did I hear that you recommend that Commissioner Buschgrude draft the letter? Is that what I heard?
[laughing].
Mr. Chairman, I got something. You know, I'm going to vote in favor of this letter. However, you know, we sit around the tables, and we sit around at meetings, and complain about the President and the administration, and how much money we spend, and how much we're in debt, and we've got to cut things. And the minute the cut comes to us, we complain and start calling our representatives right away. I'm going to vote for this, because I guess, you know, we need the money, but somewhere, sometime in this country, the people have to stand up and say enough is enough, and we're not going to take any more government subsidies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
You know, I totally, I get what you're saying, Ron, but to me, there is a difference in this, in that the Secure Rural Schools was really created for those counties that have a large amount of federal lands. And we, in our local school districts and in our local counties, provide maintenance on highways, we provide law enforcement, we provide schooling. And what happens is that we, every one of us in this room that has property, is paying property taxes to handle that extra load financially for the counties and school districts. So it, it's great to have wildernesses and forests and Badlands National Monument, and all of those things within our county borders, but every one of us pays extra because they're there. And to me, those are national designated properties, and they are not, I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's right, that the national government comes in and says, "We're going to take this property off your tax rolls, and you're going to pay to maintain it, to educate our children." And I, so I, to me, it's a little different. I think that actually they have a responsibility to handle what the consequences of their designations are.
Thank you. I, I totally agree with you, and I, and that's a very valid point. I'm sure that everyone else in this country that is getting a subsidy can come up with a good reason why they should be getting theirs also.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I, you know, Ron or Commissioner Buschgrude, you and I have had this discussion before, and, and I totally agree with you, that, that we've got to stop, or start stopping someplace. Unfortunately, in a case like this, you know, I live where there's a whole bunch of, of non-tax land around me, and that's an extra burden for the Hill City School District. As a matter of fairness, I guess I wouldn't use that word, it's just a matter of, of the, in that situation, we probably need to be, the Hill City School District in particular, needs to be remunerated for the vast distances we have to cover, as an example, because of the federal ground in our district. So I look at it differently than a substitute, I mean, different than a subsidy.
Is this Commissioner from the Hill City area talking? It sounds strange to me that he's willing to take government subsidies.
Once again, I wouldn't call it a subsidy.
[laughing].
It's all in words.
Thank you, Commissioner Farabee.
You're certainly welcome.
Any further comments? If not, we have a motion, roll call vote.
Buschgrude?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye, motion carried. This is an item from the Highway Department.
Good morning, Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway.
Morning.
We're here today, I think, asking for authorization to purchase corrugated metal pipe from True North Steel Company, as they bid it to Beadle County, South Dakota. We have reviewed the Beadle County specifications, they meet all of our requirements. We have also reviewed their documentation, as in their notice to bidders, affidavit of publication, and a copy of the Beadle County Commissioners' Minutes approving the bid to True North Steel. This documentation confirms that the bid process went through the proper state statute. Our total purchase for the, the year of 2015 is expected to exceed 25,000. Therefore, it's, we are required to, to bid or buy off of a bid awarded to another government entity. I guess we'd ask for a motion authorizing us to purchase on the Beadle County culvert bid from True North Steel.
I'll make that motion to authorize purchase from Beadle County corrugated metal pipe. Is that what you need?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Buschgrude, we enjoyed your comments on the last motion, maybe you'd continue to enlighten us?
Speechless, that's pretty good.
Well, Mr. Chair, before, before he votes, you might, I might suggest to him, or Mark might tell him, that most of those culverts are going to go in the Hill City area.
Okay, any other comments? If not, those who have a roll call vote.
Buschgrude?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, item 20, has been removed at the request of the applicant. And so we move to item 21, Commissioner Troutman.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I know we had this subject brought up last meeting, and I, I was just really curious about the whole process, and I wanted to understand what further information there is out there. I believe that when we look at a situation as a commission, and certainly if we go back to our code of conduct, it, it says that we really have a responsibility to hear all sides and treat all individuals with that ability to have a hearing. And sometimes, we have a tendency to discount staff as having a right to be heard, and I believe that they should have that. And so for me, I did some research, tried to understand what had happened, and today I asked all of those individuals on, that are a part of the county employees group, who have had some kind of input into Mr. Marlowe's concerns, that, that we hear that chronological order, and we get a chance to understand what happened, as well as, as what Mr. Marlowe said. So I, I would ask Planning and Zoning to open, please, with that.
Can I interrupt for just a second? I guess the general public doesn't know why we're doing this, so if we could have a background of why we're doing this on Mr. Marlowe's, are, it's because of last week-
I think we will be hearing that. I think we will be hearing that.
Well, the bottom line is, Mr. Marlowe came up last week, and George had brought something up about it. And now we're letting the staff have their say. Okay, thank you.
That's what I was saying.
And if I may, Mr. Chair?
I, I think we'll proceed with the presentation, and then we'll have our discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm just going to do a basic timeline of what happened, I guess, in the Planning and Zoning Office regarding this, and what has happened in the past. Starting in June of 1970, the lot that is owned by Mr. Marlowe now was platted. In 1971, a building permit was issued to construct a single-family residence. As part of that building permit, a wastewater permit was also pulled and attached to that, and it was for a 1,000-gallon septic tank and a 1,500, or 1,500-gallon cesspool, and it was sized for three bedrooms. In November 1981, that lot was replatted again, and it was increased to 6.8 acres from 4.25 acres. In August of 1991, Olson Escavating installed 450 square feet of drain field and 85 feet of solid PVC from dry well to drain field. And we'll get to that later with the receipts and some background. In June 1992, a building permit was pulled to construct a 24-foot by 28-foot carport with a 6-by-28-foot deck. In December of 1992, conditional use permit, 9255, for a guest house on second story of the carport, was approved. There's no record of the wastewater system for this guest house. In February 1998, a building permit was pulled to add in addition to the existing studio above the carport. And then in May of 2012, Hill Septic Service pumped and observed the onsite wastewater system located at the above property, 6,003 Pioneer Circle. So the history of the observation of this, in July, on July 15, 2013, first notices were sent out for pumping and observation requirements. Mr. Marlowe's property was one of, you know, 80 to 100 notices we send out at one time. On July 19 of 2013, Mr. Marlowe had contacted staff and indicated that he had a cesspool. Staff pulled the building permit, the original building permit, to verify information. What you see on the overhead right now is a copy of that building permit. And if I can here, get this. Right there, it had indicated that there was a cesspool on the property, and the drain field would be added later. The initials there are RJW, he's our Environmental Health Officer, and also, Mr. Marlowe had signed the building permit. Sorry. And then again, on August 13, Mr. Marlowe had contacted planning staff regarding the cesspool on his property. And here is a copy of the sewage system for the building permit, it had indicated, I'm sorry for the kind of faintness of it, but it indicated 1,000-gallon septic tank and a 1,500-gallon cesspool, and it was sized for three bedrooms. So this is the observation form that was received by our office on July 24 of 2013. It had indicated that it was pumped in May of 2012. When we had, when we received these observation forms in our office, we usually pull all of, I should say, we pull the, any existing building permits, septic permits, anything to verify that what's on this observation form is actually what was installed, or what we have record of. And so that sticky note that's on it, it was just an indication to staff that we had found that there was a cesspool on the building permit. So this is the correspondence that ensued between staff and Mr. Marlowe. On September 6, the notice of deficiency was sent by the Planning Department to Mr. Marlowe. This is a normal procedure. If there's any discrepancies between the observation form and building permits, any things on the observation forms that indicate that there may be issues with the system, we do send these deficiency notices. On September 18, again, the environmental planner had sent a letter to Mr. Marlowe indicating that the cesspool needed abandoned, and that proof such as pictures or receipts of the work done would be acceptable. On September 24 of 2013, we did receive that notice on September 26. Mr. Marlowe wrote a letter to the Planning Department. He indicated that he did not have a cesspool, but in fact, a dry well, and that Olson Construction installed a drain field in 1991. He also requested a hearing in front of the county commissioners at that time. On September 27, the Planning Department responded to Mr. Marlowe's letter with the appeal procedure that's in our zoning ordinance. And then, let me see, oh, sorry, on September, or October 16, 2013, Mr. Marlowe wrote a letter requesting an appeal. So the appeal procedure, basically, you appeal to the planning director, and then that decision, if you don't like the planning director's decision, then you appeal to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission automatically goes to the Board of Commissioners. So that's what he had requested. So on November 4, 2013, a letter was sent to Mr. Marlowe stating that the planning director sustained the environmental's decision, review or decision of the observation form and building permit information. On November 6, 2013, Mr. Marlowe wrote a letter requesting a hearing before the Planning Commission. And then on November 15 of 2013, Mr. Marlowe was sent notification that the Planning Commission will hear the appeal at the November 25, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. So this is a copy of the receipt we received on November 13, 2013, from Olson Escavating, indicating that drain field was put in in 1991. We don't have any record of a construction permit for this, or anything, we don't have profile hole information or percolation information. So at the Planning Commission meeting on November 25, 2013- So, at the Planning Commission meeting on November 25, 2013, there was approximately 40 minutes of discussion regarding the appeal between the Planning Commissioners' staff and Mr. Marlowe. Mr. Marlowe had indicated to Commissioner Litson that he had a septic tank, cesspool or dry well, and a drain field. He had also indicated that it would cost thousands of dollars to put a pipe from his tank to his drain field. And the Planning Commission's decision at that meeting, after about 40 minutes of discussion, was that due to lack of information presented, and just have the app lander, Mr. Marlowe, determine where the pipe from the septic tank goes, and where the pipe, excuse me, the dry well goes. So then on November 26, 2013, Mr. Marlowe wrote a letter to the Planning Department indicating that a cesspool on his property is grandfathered, and he enclosed a copy of the observation form, and he had also indicated that staff made an erroneous statement during the hearing on November 25. Response was sent to Mr. Marlowe from the Planning Director at this time. It did address the erroneous statement. It did address that the staff had made a comment that the observation form indicated that a cesspool was on the property, but in fact, it was really the building permit that had indicated that. So, we did address that. And moreover, that Mr. Marlowe had indicated that a cesspool was located on his property prior to receipt of the observation form by the Planning Department. And then on December 9, Mr. Marlowe sent another letter requesting a reopening of the hearing in front of our Planning Commission. And then on December 13, 2013, Planning Department responded. Mr. Marlowe indicated dates that were available for the Board of Commissioners to hear the appeal. And we did send, excuse me, the Planning Department did send information to Mr. Marlowe indicating that his appeal would be heard on January 7, 2014. So, at that Board of Commissioner meeting, there was approximately 30 minutes of discussion. Mr. Marlowe had indicated to Commissioner Troutman, he didn't know the cesspool was being used, but the system backed up into his home, and he had Duane Olson add a drain field. Commissioner Holloway asked Mr. Marlowe if it was his understanding that he just needed to bypass the cesspool, and Mr. Marlowe responded, yes, but it wasn't that simple. And then during the end of the discussion, Chairman Peterson asked Mr. Marlowe what constraints were keeping this from being resolved, and Mr. Marlowe indicated he'd have to tear up his fence and have Duane Olson or another digger dig it out, and there was no access to the cesspool, and it was covered up. And at that time, the Board of Commissioners denied Mr. Marlowe's appeal. So, following that, on January 10, 2014, there was a letter sent to Mr. Marlowe indicating that the Board of Commissioners denied the appeal, and that he had to comply with the decision to show where the pipe basically went. And if no action was taken, within 30 days, the matter would be turned over to the State's Attorney's Office for further legal action. On February 11, Mr. Marlowe had not complied within the 30 days, and it was turned over to the State's Attorney's Office. So, there was additional correspondence during that time, and there is a representative from the State's Attorney's Office that can speak to what transpired between then and October.
Hi. Kinsley Groop from the State's Attorney's Office. So, the case was pursued by the State's Attorney's Office at that point, and it was eventually set for a court trial, which is basically a case, it's the whole entire case, but presented to a magistrate judge, and all the evidence has to go on. It's technically a civil case, but since it has the potential of jail time and fines associated with it, it's treated in criminal magistrate court. And so, it was set for a court trial because the state agreed that there wouldn't be any actual or suspended jail time put on the table, so it would just be presented to the judge. And at that point, I ended up going through the whole entire case. It's a big file, and also talked with Mr. Marlowe about it. We sent various letters back and forth, and Mr. Farabee came to some meetings that we had, along with Mr. Marlowe, and I felt that the State's Attorney's Office needed some more information, and hopefully some physical evidence to show what was actually going on, because the burden of proof is still beyond a reasonable doubt for these type of cases. So, and for instance, Mr. Marlowe had brought up, and Mr. Farabee had brought up, that observation form that talks about the fact that it does, you know, it does not appear from the observer's perspective that there's a cesspool. Well, I was wondering about that, too. What does that mean? Well, I spoke with the Planning Department, and that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not a cesspool on the property. It just means the observer checked off the box, saying, no, it does not appear. So, same thing, you know, I was wondering, what more evidence can there be? Because I feel like we need some more evidence at this point. We have some admissions to there being a cesspool, and that's what we've got at this point, but we need some more. So, this, the idea was kind of staffed in our office, and the idea was that we should probably go get some sort of a search warrant or an inspection warrant in order to actually just dig it up and see what's there. Is there a bypass pipe, or is there actually a cesspool that's being operated, and that's where the fluids from the septic are going? What's going on? And so, that was, that information was brought up to Mr. Farabee and Mr. Marlowe, that our office would probably have to pursue some sort of an inspection or search warrant. And at that point, there was more conversation about it, and Mr. Marlowe did agree that we could come out and actually see the property, get more information, a physical viewpoint of what was going on with the whole system. And so, it wasn't the first time that the idea of digging it up was ever brought up, but he was going to allow us on his property, so that was our ultimate goal with getting some sort of an inspection or search warrant, was to be able to get on the property and dig it up and see what was actually there. And so, this was kind of an informal way to go about it. So, we did that. I went to the property, and Mr. Marlowe agreed that a certain member of the Planning Department could go, so we went there, and fortunately, that employee from the Planning Department was able to kind of gauge the system, you know, see how it might work based upon what the installer had originally put on his report, and where the drain field was supposedly located. And Mr. Marlowe offered up a shovel, so, and said that, sure, you can, at this point, dig down and see if there is some sort of a bypass pipe. And so, the member of the Planning Department was able to do that, dug down, and found where that bypass pipe was necessary to be, to bypass the cesspool. And so, once the pipe was located, then it was determined that things are okay, there's not a violation at this point, but it took going through all of that, and the kind of informal resolution and permission by Mr. Marlowe to let us on the property in lieu of getting some sort of an inspection or search warrant to get to that point. Through what I saw of the case, I would have said that there was no harassment or anything like that that happened in this case. This is just a simple process of figuring out if there's a violation or not, or suspected violation, and being able to get enough evidence to determine if, you know, to be able to present to a judge in a court trial, which is just kind of the natural process of these types of things, and you have to have communications. And there are instances where defendants, people don't want to talk to people at the State's Attorney's Office, and so it's nice that there were some conversations, but it's just the natural course of the case, so I just wanted to fill everyone in from the State's Attorney's Office perspective. There wasn't any wrongdoing. There wasn't harassment on this case.
So, Mr. Chair, I just appreciate the staff showing a different chronological side, and in the future, my hope is that we will always hear all sides, that we'll have enough time to prepare, that we'll be able to have a really open discussion about what it all is. And that was only, my only purpose today is just to say, you know, we did work very hard as a staff to do what needed to be done, and there are certainly records well-kept. And I just want to say that I'm glad we got it, you know, all taken care of for you, Mr. Marlowe. I wish we could have done it quicker, but it is the way it is, and we're done, and we've got it taken care of, and I want to thank you for getting, letting us go, take the time to be on the property with you, and find that pipe, and then take care of the case. So, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Commissioner Troutman, do you believe and stand by all of the packet that was just presented?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does he need to identify himself?
Yes.
I'm Harold James Marlowe. People normally still call me Jim. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, I believe that it's the truth.
Then I have this for you.
You know, Mr. Chair, this is inappropriate.
I agree. Just leave it there.
I will.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 22.
Actually, I'd like to say something about that. I appreciate that being brought forward, but that's one commissioner with no vote. I like that Nancy's backing up the staff, but that was not voted on. That was not an issue which, I understand, Mr. Farabee wanted to prove his point, and Mr. Marlowe was that point. But that was one commissioner bringing something forward that was new, with no process or procedure, just with code of conduct, is what I'm hearing. So, I truly appreciate that you bring the truth forward, but again, one commissioner is not the vote of five. He can have his policy, or follow the process, or not. At this point, hopefully, we can adopt one, so we all are on the same page, and that we follow the same code that we have for the people of bringing things forward. So, I don't know where this goes from here, but I guess nowhere, but again, when one out of five want to bring something forward, that's not the vote of us. It was his opinion, not the vote of the commission. So, thank you, Ms. Nancy, for backing yourself up, too, with the staff.
Mr. Chair, for me.
I think we're on item 22.
Mr. Chair, you deny me a chance to respond?
We're on item 22.
That's a yes or no, sir?
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in disagreement with that. I think he has the right to talk if he wants. He is a commissioner, sir, unless you have a reason why George shouldn't speak.
Okay, Holly, would you proceed, please?
I would ask Commissioner Hadcock. This is her agenda item, sir. I'm just here to answer any questions, if she so asks.
Thank you, Holly. I brought this forward because someone had told me about the code of conduct was how we do our process and procedure up here, and I know from the agenda item that the citizens have a process and procedure, but we did not. So, with the help of the staff, I had, well, I'm going to give credit to Holly. She helped me bring this forward and look up what has worked for people in the past. So, I kind of followed what we have on our peoples, our constituent agenda, and then I think at this point, for staff enough, we have a procedure to follow, instead of guessing by code of conduct or otherwise, how we bring things forward at this point. So, this is why I brought the process and procedure. It basically is a policy to provide standards and expectations for preparation, submission, and advance review of agenda items for meetings of Pennington County Board of Commissioners. Also, if I'm correct, it has staff on there. Does it not?
This is for each commissioner, elected official, and department head.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And if I could, if we could, I don't know what the, if we adopt this, or if we have discussion, and then I would request that we adopt some type of process and procedure for us bringing things forward. I think it'd just make it a lot more accountability for us, some respect for the staff and ourselves, and hold ourselves accountable at this point.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I think that Deb has a great idea here. The only thing that I was a little concerned about is, you know, we talk about the amount of information, and sometimes that amount of information is huge, and I don't know if we have a way to kind of, I mean, how would we handle that? What if we get inches of information, or what was the thought process behind that?
Commissioner Troutman, for any agenda item that comes forward, I go through it before it ever reaches you guys, so I will absolutely take the accountability for that aspect. If you guys ever feel that I'm not giving proper direction or guidance to the department heads for submission of agenda items, please feel free to let me know. At some point, you do reach that level of complete information overload, and I work with staff to, and again, in my opinion, to present the information I feel is appropriate for you guys.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Am I able to discuss this one, sir?
You what?
Am I able, or will you allow me to discuss on this one?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
You asked for discussion. Am I going to be allowed to discuss this one, this agenda item?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. With all due respect, Commissioner Hadcock, I have no problem with citizens going through the process of submitting agenda items. I have no problem with other elected officials in the county doing that, giving us background. There are department heads. I would exclude us, and the reason being is that we're all five equals. And if we want to bring an item, and how do I use this, and I guess, if I want to bring an item forward, I don't necessarily, or you, or any of the five of us, bring an item forward, don't think I need, I have it pre-discussed. And I'm not looking for surprise. I'm not looking at that at all, but if I have an item or anybody else has an item, we have to put it on the agenda without all the background information required of all the others, because we are the ruling body, the governing body.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of Mr. Farabee?
Yes, you may.
So, what you're asking is to not provide information to the public on agenda items? You don't want to be an open government for Pennington County?
I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all. I said every other submission should have background information, and certainly, if one of us want an item, we can certainly provide background information, but by the same token, if we don't want to, then we should be exempt from that. It's nothing to do with open government.
It has everything to do with open government, sir.
I totally disagree. It's to get the other four, let's see, I bring an item, to get the other four to discuss it without preparation, then gives the public a chance to see us without preparation on an item that one of us wants to bring forward. That's the best way to get full and open discussion.
I disagree with that totally.
That people don't...
The best way to get open discussion is for everybody to know what we're going to talk about, not to come in with some surprise issue and bring it up and say, I'm going to talk about this, and no one else knows what you're talking about. That's totally wrong.
And unfortunately, Commissioner Buschrude, I disagree with you that to get the four of us, or five of us, to give it full thought, and like in my instance, I brought forth servant wrongdoing, and I wanted to present just one individual's example of servant wrongdoing, then I want to get the other four reaction without any preparation. Now, having said that, that's not to say that 90% of the time, 95% of the time, we should have background information, but what I'm saying is we should have the option of bringing forth an item for discussion.
George, I'm going to disagree as well. You have talked about, and you brought me in with that, knowing all the facts, knowing all the facts of the situation, and now you're telling me different than, we are different than the public, we are different than the staff. I don't agree. I think we all need to get our facts and get our... I think we all need to get our facts and get our work done so everybody can back it up and be ready and be prepared. And my big thing with the staff is be prepared. If they come up and they give me a half papers of what they're doing, heck, I don't want to make a decision on it. So, if you want a decision from this board, if you're just looking for a request to talk about something, I don't know if that's different, meaning talk about your committees and what you've done, that's different. I don't think you need to have a big line item on it. But if you're going to basically say that a staff was wrong, or a citizen was wrong, or this commission is wrong, have some backup. So, I have preparation or prepared for what you have to say, and that's called respect and accountability as a commissioner, and to your public and to your staff. It's called team.
There are times when I believe that the five of us, if one brings an item forward, that item should not be thoroughly researched, thoroughly prepared before it's brought forward. That way, you get the real, true feeling of how the other four think about an issue. Now, that doesn't mean going forward, that you shouldn't take that item, obviously, and digest it. But the initial reaction to an item doesn't necessarily have to be prepared. And to get, like I said, to get the real, true reaction, it's not one that's prepared, you know, a script. For example, soon as I hear somebody start reading off a speech, I just turn off. I want to hear them talk from the cuff, so to speak. And that's when you get the true reflection of what that person's thoughts are, off the cuff and not prepared. It's got nothing to do, I'm sorry, Holly, nothing to do with open meetings. It's on the agenda, and we sit here in front of the public, and we talk about items. Nothing's secret. Conversely, we go in that back room and talk about stuff. Commissioner Buschard mentioned, you know, last fall, there was an item that he didn't think it was a session material. There's a lot of things talked about that shouldn't be, but there's nothing to do with open meetings.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Holly Hennies. I'm a commissioner, I'm, excuse me, I'm a taxpayer in District One, Commissioner Farabee. Therefore, you are my representative. What you did to planning last meeting was crap. That was an absolute attack on planning, inappropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I really find it unfortunate that we, as a commission, are even considering not having information available to us to intelligently discuss issues. I find that very, very sad. I've always been proud of the fact that we've had information provided to us and to the public. And if you, as a commissioner, bring a subject forward and you don't provide information to the commission, that means it isn't provided to the public, and that takes away my concept of what open government is. I also want to say one thing about the way we're even looking at this, and that is that the commission is pulled away. But it is different in county government in that we have other elected officials. We have a treasurer, we have a sheriff, we have an auditor, we have a register of deeds. Those are all elected officials. And it would be something that if county commissioners don't have to provide information, that those elected officials would not have to either, and I certainly wouldn't like that. So, I just absolutely believe that the way you've proposed this is correct, and I want to thank you for your time on that.
Mr. Chair, the difference between the other elected officials and us is they're coming to us for action or decision or whatever. We're not going to them for the same treatment. That's our form of government.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would comment that this has been an interesting conversation. We each have an opportunity to present ourselves to the public through the doom that's being taken to this meeting, and we could argue some of the points for a long time. And we're one of five, we're this, we're that. But in the long run, we are essentially here to be stewards of a government system that delivers services to the people. And if we think we are individually superior or have authority beyond our vote, we may need to reexamine our position. Any other comments?
One more thing, positive. Thank you, Ms. Holly, for doing all the work on this and looking a lot of this up. You're, in my opinion, I respect you very much for what you do. So, thank you for all that hard work. I couldn't have got this done without you.
It's nice to be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Buschard?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Item 23. You're on again.
Okay, let me see. I guess I just, the public, when I was constituents in Ward One, a lot of people were wondering if we could have night meetings, and I wanted to know if we could put that in a budget, what it would cost. I just wanted the feel of the commission, because again, I am one out of five, and it's a constituent concern of mine. So, maybe if we could just have some discussion, if it's not going to move forward, I understand that, but I'd like to know some input from people and what that means to you if we do it or if we don't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, Commissioner Hadcock, thanks for providing a preliminary. I appreciate that, because it gave me some time to think about it. And I remember coming on as commissioner and thinking we should have evening meetings too. Here's where I get a little hung up, because I don't mind going ahead and looking at this. But where I get a little hung up is planning and zoning issues, because we are going to be asking people from the Wyoming border to Quinn, South Dakota, kind of thing. We're going to be asking them, when they have planning and zoning issues, to come in at night and travel long distances and probably be here late. And that's the part that I think we would need to work on, on how we can handle that. Like I said, I'm not opposed to evening. I think that, you know, cost-wise, it doesn't look that bad. We'd need to figure out, I mean, I'm hearing from different staff that they don't have it in their budget this year, but, you know, if we don't do it this year, maybe we could put it into the budget for next year. It's just that I get hung up on that planning and zoning issue, because we do have a large county, and that is where most of our business comes in from, because we don't handle municipal issues. So, I just was thinking that that's something we have to seriously look at.
So, Ms. Nancy, we could put this on like our budget item if we wanted to later, and then kind of discuss all the possibilities.
Yeah. But in the interim, Mr. Chair, in the interim, we could try to figure out, you know, how we're going to handle folks traveling so far late at night.
I appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond to that concern. Just because we have planning and zoning at the end doesn't mean we have to do that forever. We could have planning and zoning like at 5:00 and start the meeting at 6:00. Those are just rough numbers, but I think that would take care of the concern that Nancy raised. Start at 4:30 for that matter, for planning and zoning. So, that argument, to me, doesn't hold any water at all.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't arguing. I was just wanting to make sure that is an important part of our meeting and an important part of what we do as commissioner, and I just wanted that brought up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been around to commission much longer than I care to even admit, but this has been brought up quite a few times in the past and been tried quite a few times in the past. And I can tell you that we don't have any better attendance at night meetings than we do in day meetings. And I think the right thing that we've done in the past is if there is some special issue that we have a problem with, or we expect quite a number of people that are interested, we should have those at night. And I think we've done that in the past, and I'm sure commissioners want to have a night meeting every so often, and I'm done by them, I'll do that too.
You know, Mr. Chair, thanks, Ron, for that. I mean, and we've moved our meetings around the county to many different places for many different reasons. So, he is right. It isn't that we have precluded any kind of business because of a night meeting. If we've had to have a night meeting, we do.
So, just a question. How do you figure out the cost before the budget if we were going to talk about this at the budget?
I think our staff, Mr. Chair, wouldn't they be the best? Because they know what their costs would be, and I know we have some here.
Yeah. I just, I guess I was trying to figure out costs, but we only have some of that on our agenda. So, any way that I could get help just to find more information to bring forward would be nice. And if we, I don't know if we continue this, or I don't know what happens to the budget. I need a little bit of help there. I don't want to drop it, but I'd like more discussion, just to keep looking into it.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to ask Mr. Buschard a question.
Proceed.
When's the last time Pennington County had a night meeting, other than a special session?
You know, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. We've had several transportation issues in night meetings in recent years, the last year or so.
My question was, when's the last time Pennington County had a regular meeting, not a special meeting, at night?
Oh.
Do you recall, Ron? I don't.
I guess I don't recall either. I can't answer that.
So, how about facts? Facts don't have sides, folks. There's a lot of opinions out, all kinds of opinions around. Facts are facts are facts. Facts don't have sides. If I might, Mr. Chair, during knocking on a lot of doors a year ago, thereabouts, I got the question quite a few times. And you and I are the only ones that have constituents that are concerned about county business. The folks in Rapid City and Hill City and Wal and so on and so forth aren't affected by county except taxes, which is big.
I beg your pardon, that's a totally misleading statement. If you're going to base something on facts, use some facts.
Which county ordinance applies to you?
Rapid City pays 97% of the taxes that the county collects. So, don't give me that. We're not, my constituents are not interested in what we're doing.
How many county ordinances apply to you, Ron? How many?
As many as are needed.
How many apply to you? Anyway, I did get the question any number of times, and I said I would do everything I could to try to get at least alternate day and night meetings so that folks could attend our meetings. That's my position, and unless somebody comes along and says it won't work, or it can't work, or for whatever reason, or it's going to cost a hundred thousand bucks or whatever, I agree with Commissioner Hadcock that we ought to have, try at least to have alternate meetings, one day, one night, alternate.
Well, what I can do too is get more information and bring it back. So, we're all, we have the facts, and I think we're all affected, and I think all of our constituents want this, George, or don't want this. We'll see what it costs the taxpayers of Rapid City, and then see if they decide that that would be silly to do it or very positive for Pennington County. So, I will bring back more facts, and I appreciate the discussion. Everybody's discussion counts, and I will take that in consideration. If anybody would like to help me with this, I'm not offended either, so.
And I close. Mr. Chair was saying that certainly Rapid City has their meetings at night or in the evening, as does Hill City, and I'm almost sure Wal does, and I know Keystone does. The school boards have their meetings at night, with exception. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do we, Holly, do we need a motion to defer this, or?
I just ask that you make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Do we have such a motion?
Till budget, maybe.
Another option until budget hearings.
That'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 We need to do, Mr. Chair, we need to do roll call.
Yep. Sorry about that.
Okay. Buschard?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item is item 24. Legislative session. Update on bills, the fire administrator, and Pine Beetle funding.
Good morning again, Denny Gorton, Pennington County Fire. I had included a memo asking for support or some direction from the county commission on, actually, on two bills, House Bill 1112 and Senate Bill 161. Let's see, I put SD instead of SB. Sorry about that. Late yesterday afternoon, I got a call from Commissioner Buschard, and then subsequent emails and phone calls between Bob Wilcox from the county commission officials. And I guess at this point, these are just nothing more than informational. These two bills apparently are going to go through some major revamping and rewrites, and I'm not sure what the final look of the bills will be. So, however, what they were trying to do is at least allow the five counties that border Black Hills Fire Protection District, maybe some ability to regulate fireworks. That's kind of the direction. Not sure where it'll go. So, I guess rather than any, requesting any formal action, it's just an informational item at this point.
Okay, thank you. I would point out that I got a fireworks call last night, so people are thinking about it.
Yes. So, okay.
Thank you, Denny.
And item, Senate Bill 152. Scott?
Morning again, Scott Guffey, Pennington County, Wheaton Pass Director. Senate Bill 152 has been introduced through the Pine Beetle Working Group, which Nancy and I are part of. We've kind of worked with this and with the state to kind of continue the pine beetle mitigation efforts. There's a $1.9 million ask from the legislature. Last year, they funded $1.95 million. The original ask was, there was two bills last year, a $2 million ask from the working group, and then $350,000 coming from the Department of Ag. They ended up marrying those two bills and funding $1.95, with $350,000 coming off the top to go to Coastal State Park, and then $1.6 went to an all-lands approach in the Black Hills. So, this year, it's a $1.9 million ask. I know funds are tight, tighter this year than it was last year, so it's going to be a fight to try to get some funding for it. And there's, back in 2012, $2 million was allocated, and that went down to the counties through the state, through grant funds. We're still working on that. We've pretty much will have all those funds expended, with the exception of Mead County, they should have them done by the end of February. So, there's been some questions raised by legislature while there's still money on the books going to the counties that haven't been spent. Well, we had some issues last year with the winter storm outlets and the government shutdown, so that kind of slowed us down. It's going through Senate appropriations Friday morning. Nancy and I may go down and help testify, or Black Hills Forest Resource Association has retained a lobbyist, and he's going to keep us posted whether he wants us down there to help provide testimony, so. Keep it posted.
Do you have anything, comments, Mr. Troutman?
Well, last week when I was in Pire, the thing that you hear is that there's really a lot of support, excuse me, support for funding this, but they are all very, very concerned about where that funding will come from, and... concerned about where that funding will come from, and it's going to be difficult. My hope is that we've come a long ways, and we still have some very hot spots in Pennington County that we could use some help with. And we, as a county, have spent pretty much everything we can possibly spend. And so, it will be interesting to see where it goes. I mean, I think it's important to get support for whatever they decide to do, but hopefully for the 1.9, so.
Yeah, not only hot spots, but we also have about 50,000 acres of dead-standing timber out there that needs to be addressed, so. But as we, as I finish up this state grant funding, I'll be back in front of you to give the full report on where that money went, and how we're looking in the Pine Beetle status, so.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Are there any other bills that the commission would like to address at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to talk about the Senate bill that we'd worked on, trying to revise the current 10-6-31-3, to give a more clear definition of terms, and a more equal way of declaring a smaller piece of property as an A classification for taxation purposes. And it is a different attitude in Pier. Last year when we went, they were going like, "Oh, what are you talking about?" But this year, they understood what we were talking about. And there was some concern that it had been rushed through the Tax Advisory Committee, and so, the sponsor, which was Senator Billy Sutton from the Ag Task Force, he felt that they needed some time to look at it again this summer, and they will be doing that. I think that it is disappointing we couldn't take it on through, but it is also important to get it right, and to make it correct for the state. And that is a huge step we have taken, in that people see from the eastern part of the state now that it is something they should be concerned about. So, I'm very hopeful for next year to actually get something through that's appropriate.
One other one I want to bring to the board's attention is Senate Bill 102, which is the bill for tax increment districts. There's a bill that states that any tax incremental district created by a municipality or a county shall be funded entirely by the entity creating the district. And I know this board and past boards have talked about TIFs quite extensively over the past, so I wanted to bring this to your attention in the event that the board wanted to take a position one way or the other on this bill, to direct me to contact any legislators. The other one I have concerns about is House Bill 1167, which has to do with publications. It's great in theory, however, there's one sentence at the end that could open it wide up for us. And that, that is, if a county has a website, that we, in lieu of posting legal notices, we could post them on the website. However, at the end, it says that if someone registers, they could request those documents, and the county has to provide them free of charge. And that could be significant. So, just wanted to bring those to the board's attention. If there's anything else you guys want to know about, please contact me.
Appreciate your keeping tabs on this for us. And do we have any particular items that we want to emphasize as far as the commission supporting or opposing?
So, Mr. Chair, the 1167 is, I think we should be doing something with that, because we can provide information for people, but the cost can be significant. And I think that's a point that is important for the legislature as they decide to do this, or review this, or as they also are running it through committee. I just think it's an important point to be brought up. And I would wonder if we'd want to just do a letter to the members of those committees that are going to be reviewing it. Of course, so much happens so quickly down there, you don't know what they're doing today. We might have a letter, and then it's moot point, but it seems to me that we should provide that information to people.
Commissioner Buschrude, do you have direct contact with Wilcox?
Yeah, sure.
Would it be appropriate that you collaborate with Holly and make sure our concerns about 1167 are communicated to him?
Absolutely. We can go to him. I have no problem with getting, going straight to the legislators either, especially the ones on the committee.
Is the commission comfortable with us proceeding to have Commissioner Buschrude do that?
And work with Holly.
If I don't hear any objection, we'll pursue that in that manner.
Thank you, Ron.
Five minutes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Five-minute break?
Yes.
So, we, I need a motion. Yeah. Don't we need a motion?
And I'm not sure we need to make a motion for recess, but if we do, we do.
George, did you make the motion?
I move we take five.
Second, please.
Motion and a second. Take five, that includes you, Ron.
Thank you very much, I needed it.
Roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Yes.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, minor plat, PL 14-37, and subdivision regulations variance, SV 14-19, for George Adrian and Lloyd Hill. The Planning Commission did recommend that this be continued to the February 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. Item B, a layout plat, PL 14-36, for Robert Drew and the Mills Family Limited Partnership. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this plat with nine conditions. And item C, the first reading and public hearing of rezone, RZ 14-12, and comprehensive plan amendment, CA 14-09, for Gordon and Carmen Abernathy. The Planning Commission did recommend that this be continued to the March 3, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item D.
Good morning again, Brittany Molitor. Item D is a vacation of easement, VE 1401, for Chris and Rebecca Lowe. The applicants have requested to vacate a portion of the non-access easement located along the interior of Track 38 of Spring Creek Acres in order to construct a driveway. Currently, the access was to be taken off Herbert Court. There is a non-access easement on the east side of this lot line, as you can see here. They're requesting to vacate about 50 feet of this to build a garage. They're doing this because there's a huge drainage area on that north portion of the property, so to construct a driveway across that would be onerous, so they're asking to vacate this. So, staff is recommending, or Planning Commission recommended approval of the vacation of easement with four conditions.
I'll move approval.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the vacation of the easement. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I've got a question, or two. Is the physical approach off of Dewey Lane there now, or not?
It is. They are currently building the structure, they have an approved building permit, and an on-site wastewater system installed. There's the, there's the approach off Dewey right now.
Condition two says, within 30 days of approval of this request for the existing approach, and then number three says that the approach and driveway be constructed. I guess I'm having trouble with tenses. So, three, three is not required if two is already, two is already done. Is that what you're saying, the existing approach is there?
Existing approach is there, but we have not received a approach permit from the road district. This is in a road district. So, as far as the approach and the roads, that's under the jurisdiction of the road district out there. So, they are just asking to vacate that portion to allow that approach there. The road district can't approve that approach unless you, as a board, approve the vacation of the non-access easement, of that 50 feet.
That was my question. Number three says that the approach and driveway be constructed. To me, that's in the future. Now, if it's already there, you can't do it in the future. And, don't respond, please. In general description, they appear on page two or three, it says specifically, "The applicant is requesting," and so on and so forth, "in order to build an approach and driveway." Well, if it's done, then it's done, and all is finished, but this is sloppy work. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, if I really look at that approach, it's not actually properly done. There is no drainage ending there, it's not actually completed. Looks to me like they started using it to get their, their in and out to build the building, but it's not officially complete, and I'm just curious as to why that's a concern, because what this is really saying is it has to be done appropriately and properly, and right now, it's just a temporary-looking thing.
They're not living in the structure now, they're using it to access their building site at this time.
And this is not sloppy work, George. This is very professional.
Well, when you say it's existed, then you say it doesn't exist, you know, that, to me, that's sloppy work. I'm sorry.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Chair, we have very well explained it, in that it is just a temporary thing going on, and what is being required in those conditions is a permanent approach.
Then it should so state.
Well, George, be a little more professional to the staff when you say things, because sloppy work, because it's not quite up to your standards, doesn't mean the rest of us. So, George, be professional, because you don't want people to come up here and say that you're just a sloppy commissioner, and what your work is sloppy because of your opinion. So, be professional, George. It's not sloppy.
Okay, let's proceed. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion will answer the roll call.
Buschrude?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item E.
Item E, oh, sorry. Is vacation of section line right-of-way VS 1501 for Brad Polans. Sorry, I pulled up the wrong one. Is to vacate 757 feet of section line right-of-way located in all of Tract Polans. Let me find this one, I apologize. So, staff is recommending approval of the vacation of section line 1501 following two conditions. Background on this, the existing conditions, there's a shed located within the portion of the section line right-of-way. According to the Department of Equalization records, the shed is 30 feet wide by 64 feet long, and was built in 1978. There is a single-family residence, a garage, and a tool shed that's also on the property, and a single-wide mobile home and on-site wastewater treatment system. The lot consists of 6.39 acres, and is zoned low-density residential district. Petition requirements, according to state law, in order to vacate a portion of the section line, signatures from 1% of the votes cast in the last gubernatorial election are required. In November 2014, there was 33,455 votes cast, therefore, 335 signatures were required. The applicant has met this requirement. Pennington County Auditor's Department verified 335 signatures on December 17, 2014, from a public petition to vacate a section line right-of-way.
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the vacation of the section line. One of the things that I would comment on as a question, and this is kind of looking forward, but is it possible, in a situation like this, when plating occurs, to automatically vacate the section line at the same time the plating is done? I mean, it's just something to think about, because as you look at the section lines and the lots that intersect it, or overlap it, or whatever you want to call it, it just seems as though it would be prudent and efficient to incorporate the vacation at the same time. Any other comments? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Buschrude?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
I'm sorry, aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we covered items from the chair when we talked about the Title III, item under 18, so we'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports they wish to make?
I went to economic development yesterday, and Ben Snow is here, if we can have him speak on kind of what was going on in economic development, and how it affects our county. It's pretty interesting on all the stuff going on, if that's okay.
Good morning.
My name is Ben Snow, I'm the president for the Rapid City Economic Development Partnership, and I was just here as a common citizen for the meeting today, but thank you, Commissioner Haddock, for the opportunity to give a report on what took place at our meeting yesterday morning. So, once a year, the partnership has an opportunity to have an annual meeting, which is essentially a report back to the community. We had about 120 folks there or so, and it's just a great opportunity to celebrate a lot of the good things that's happening in the economy. And there were probably about a dozen company expansions that were celebrated as part of that, as that event, as well as some of the other initiatives that we have, that we're working on. Most of you, most of you are not strangers to this, but particularly for the two newest commissioners, I would be happy to come back sometime and provide more detail, if there's time on one of your agendas coming up, to give an update, to talk about stuff a little bit more in depth. But just to tease you a little bit, some of the initiatives that we have going on are something that's very near and dear to my heart ever since I arrived here in South Dakota five years ago, and that is that the region has an obligation to each other, to behave more as a region. And so, that's, it's not just Rapid City and Pennington County, I think that that's great. I mean, the closer and more united Rapid City and Pennington County are, the better off the whole region's going to be. That's kind of where it starts, in my opinion, for obvious reasons. That's where the largest population base, and... That's where the largest population base, and the largest piece of our regional economic engine comes from Rapid City and Pennington County, as compared to the other twenty smaller communities and the other five counties that comprise what we call the Rushmore Region of South Dakota. So, for the last three annual meetings, for my part, I have certainly underscored the importance and my passion for behaving as a region. And sometimes it's tough buy-in for communities, and I've worked, I think, pretty tirelessly over the last two or three years to make a concerted effort to reach out to the other communities, not just my economic development, professional colleagues in Sturgis, and in Spearfish, and Southern Hills, but to take part in the mayor's monthly luncheons, for example, to see that all the different mayors from throughout the hills. I think the commissioners do something similar, although I've never been privy to that or never attended those. If the commissioners throughout the Black Hills have the same type of thing, I would like to invite myself to come in and give the same kind of spiel as that we've been able to share with the mayors. But, bottom line for us is that this is a regional economy, and we all need to understand and recognize the value that we all create to each other. For example, if I was just marketing Rapid City, South Dakota, and if the seventy thousand-plus souls that live just in the municipal boundary line of Rapid City was all we had to sell, that would be good. But it's much better when you can frame Rapid City and Pennington County really as being the cornerstone of this much larger trading area that goes out, you know, two hundred miles and includes six hundred and fifty thousand people, if you do a two-hundred-mile radius from downtown Rapid City. Well, that's nothing to sneeze at, and I, for one, like the idea that we have a larger market that we can really talk about. So, when you frame the core economic engine within the backdrop of the Black Hills of South Dakota, it's a much more compelling argument. So, it just makes it a lot easier than, for example, if it was just Rapid City, for example, sitting in the middle of the prairie that did not have the backdrop of the Black Hills. So, anyway, that's something that's been a common theme in our last two or three meetings, and yet yesterday was no exception, to celebrate some of those things that's happened. And I just did some quick math here, and this past year, just the examples that we gave at the meeting yesterday, there were ten company expansions that represent eight hundred and fifty employees, which is really cool stuff. Those are year-round, good-wage types of employees. And the fun part I like to make with the economic connections we have with the whole region is, I don't know where those eight hundred and fifty people live. My guess is, all eight hundred and fifty of them do not live in Rapid City, even though their place of work is in Rapid City in these examples. All those companies also represent over a million square feet of assessed property, all of them, except our incubator. I think that one's tax-exempt, because we sit on the school of mines under a ninety-nine-year ground lease with the board of regents. But the others, ours is only forty thousand feet, so even if you take that out, there's still over a million square feet of assessed value. And the fun part I like to give to you guys particularly, is not a one of those was a beneficiary of a tax increment finance district. And so, you've heard me, I don't want, you know, I sound like a broken record, you guys? I don't want to sound like a broken record. I just like to highlight that, as saying, a lot of that was Rapid City opportunity-capture-fund-grant money, not all of them, but some of them, to say, hey, why don't you do that expansion here? And so, they punch out a wall and add another thirty thousand feet, or they, even, we help them in other non-financial ways, and they say, gosh, I'm bullish on this area. This is a great distribution hub. Wausau Supply is a great example of that. They had a sixty thousand footprint, now it's going to be almost two hundred and fifty thousand footprint. No tax increment districts required for that, no opportunity-capture money given for that operation, but a good thing that's happening here in our economy. So, to what extent does that benefit Pennington County? I'd be happy to crunch the numbers with you guys. You probably have more capable staff to do that, but I'm certainly happy to sit down and actually put a pencil to it and say, what is the economic ripple effect of that, those expansions? How does that benefit Pennington County? And so, I could do a return-on-investment analysis for the ten grand that we get in monetary, financial partnership from Pennington County every year. We're truly grateful for every one of those, ten thousand dollars, but the return on investment is remarkable. In fact, as you know, I've been asking for more money from Pennington County, and I probably won't stop until I'm not doing this job anymore, because when I got here five years ago, our support from Pennington County was a whopping zero dollars. And that's not to minimize what you give up with tax increment districts. You're not even going to get me, you know, trying to defend that, because I understand that the finances are. What you will get me defending is the fact that, for whatever dollar amount the county decides to continue supporting the Rapid City Economic Development Partnership at, the return on that investment is phenomenal. And if it's ten grand today, and I come in and ask you for fifty, when you get into your budget cycle, I genuinely would love to sit down with you guys and say, what is that incremental four to go to? What are we focused on that you say, ah, that's great, too Rapid City-heavy maybe for my liking, and I wish you would focus more on this, or this, or this? We're open. You guys got a seat on our board, and I've been consistent in telling you, that opportunity to have that discussion to say, no, we think it's worth zero. I think, you think you should be paying us, but I would like to come in and say, no, let's sit down and talk about that. What do you want that to look like? Because we're, we are regional. I mean, in our thinking, there's no question about it, and I will stand behind that. And I've got a lot of witnesses, if you will, throughout the Black Hills area that says, yeah, this guy's legit. He really does believe in this regional concept. So, again, it starts with Rapid City. That's where our largest financial support comes from. But as I mentioned on our meeting yesterday, the fact that we're a nonprofit corporation, and the fact that we do get money from the government and from the private sector, which we've doubled over the last five years that I've been here, is just critical to our success. It provides us an independent legitimacy or credibility that doesn't, you don't quite always get if you're just a governmental department doing economic development. So, as we go forward, please consider that. If Pennington County was to say, we want to create the Pennington County Economic Development Office and create an overhead function within county government, I would sure think you would consider leveraging that investment with us before moving in that type of direction, because your return on that investment's probably going to be pretty good.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions, or for Ben, I'm not supposed to ask, I think you are, but I guess I brought you forward too, because we have, I just talked to one of the guys downtown, and the stock show, we don't have any banners downtown, we don't have some of the advertising I think that we could do better at, and I didn't know if that was economic development, but I did call downtown, in fairness to you, and see if we can do better at that, at welcoming our people in Rapid City and our rural people, and saying, you're awesome, thank you for helping Pennington County and Rapid City for this big event, so.
Can I add some, I want to add to that too, because we, again, we had about seventy-five minutes to talk about everything that happened over the last twelve months. So, we did have a slide yesterday, and I haven't cranked all the numbers yet. George, I hope you don't think this is sloppy work, but we had twelve icons that shows as twelve economic engines within the region. And I'll give you some of those. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, Ellsworth Air Force Base, Black Hills State University, National American University, Western Dakota Technical Institute. We had twelve of them up there, and if you were to do the math, I know each of these groups does their economic impact analysis, and I always put a little bit of salt in some of those studies whenever they're done, but nonetheless, if you look at this regional economy as being about a seven and a half billion-dollar economy, I would like to see how those twelve major economic engines figure into that seven and a half billion-dollar economy. Does that make sense? Because I actually have never put all those together to say, gee, just those twelve engines represent twenty-five percent of our regional economy, because I'd be really interested in seeing that. That would help to your point, in saying that if we've got these crown jewel, whether it's an event, which we don't call economic development per se, but we do call it economic impact, because it does contribute to the economy, brings dollars from over there, and brings them into our region.
Well, it puts, excuse me, it puts the Civic Center and the fairgrounds both bringing many people in at the same time. It's a team effort to do what's best for Rapid City and Pennington County. So, I just thought that's, it's got to be a huge event, because it's one of the events we are in cooperation with the city. I mean, two big Civic Center, big, I mean, my bottom line is, I didn't know that the fairgrounds had only thirty days that they didn't have events going on.
How many?
Thirty days out of the year that they don't have events going on?
I think it's much less than that.
And Nancy would know. But I'm just saying, that's a pretty big impact for Rapid City and Pennington County, and maybe we could just do better, but we could always use help from economic development and how to do better on some of that. And that's just meeting with you and seeing how you could help us. So, I just see, I guess my main issue when I was looking at those slides is, okay, I'm going to be biased. The stock show is huge for a cooperation compared to a lot of the stuff you're doing, or the people that are up there, without not discounting them in a sense, but it's a good team effort with both city and county.
I'll just have one thing to add to that, too, and thank you. There are entities in our community who have their own boards of directors, and they've got their own marketing budgets and missions and that. For example, the downtown, you know, Rapid City group. I think it's perfectly appropriate for our organization to do as much bragging about that, as much cheerleading about that as we can, and as much cooperation where it's appropriate, without sticking our nose into their, you know, into their tent to say, hey, we know how to do this better than you guys. And within each of those organizations or events that I highlighted on that during our presentation yesterday, almost without exception, they each have their own governing board of directors, and their own marketing budgets, and their own machine kind of in play. So, I can wave the flag and brag about how great they are, what a great impact they are, and they are, then I focus, well, who's not doing something? What's not being addressed? And that's where I feel like the Rapid City Economic Development Partnership and our partners could come in and say, well, gee, who's addressing the year-round employment for high-wage industries? What entity in town is doing that, is focused on that? And so, it's really kind of filling those gaps, not trying to just be redundant where there's already groups.
Well, could you be about us more? I'm kidding. I just wanted you to come up here and fill in the commission and then the public of, that was a pretty cool meeting, and that the stock show and rodeo, I've been out of the loop as well, and I've been in Rapid City, what, fifty-one years? It's awesome, and it's always been awesome, I know that, but I've been involved a lot with city stuff and not a lot of fairgrounds and different things, and it's exciting to be in Pennington County, just to see all the things they do and how they do impact Rapid City and the surrounding areas. So, again, thank you to the citizens for that, and by the way, thank you for coming up, and hopefully we could see more of you and how you can help us.
Anytime. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Ben, when we have, we don't have a regular monthly meeting for the Black Hills Commissioners, but when we do, I'll remember you.
Okay, thank you.
Put you on them.
That would be great. I will be going down to, just as an FYI, I'll be going down to Hill City at the end of this month to share a lot of the stuff. I was invited by their chamber and their economic development corporation to just give an update, because some of them weren't able to come to our meeting. So, I'm happy to do that and have done that with lots of communities throughout the hills.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Buscud, do you have any committee meetings you want to report?
Nothing you'd be interested in.
How's the golfing?
That's one of them.
Commissioner Farabee?
I do. I went to emergency management board meeting and just getting my feet wet, of course, but there's an issue that was raised about no radio capability in that ELC room, and Dustin, of course, is working on that, and he made a comment that the roof of this building is off limits, and for whatever reason, and that being the case, to get radio communications is probably going to be a relatively expensive fix. And I guess if you want me to check in further as to why we can't put an antenna on this building, at least for emergency management, and I would do so if.
You know, Mr. Chair, being I'm on the building committee, that would be great if you'd bring that to us.
Okay.
Okay.
It sounded to me like it. It's one of those deals where there's no radio contact. Without a radio contact, you don't have much of an ELC. Kind of interesting. On the other, I went to community health meeting the other night, and just totally learning in that situation, and neither here nor there, but Stan Adelstein is back to somewhat of health. He was at the board meeting, so he's not, you know, still around. And I'm thinking that community health and Health and Human Services and behavior management, I'm thinking they all work together, and as days go on, I'll learn more about their interface. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Troutman?
I just want to mention that we had the ribbon cutting Friday morning for the opening of Black Hills Stock Show. We had a great crowd. I was really glad to see all those folks there, and they have done quite well, except for the weather Friday, or Saturday afternoon with that freezing rain that kind of hurt some of the attendance for the events for Saturday night, but they've had a good crowd, and they're real pleased with it. Yesterday, I was up there talking to some of the vendors, and they're saying they're having really great response from the public, so that's, I mean, then they'll come back, so that's great. So, get down there and see it tonight is at the James Kerstad Event Center is the Ranch Rodeo, and of course, there are several things going on everywhere. It's just been a real, really good attendance.
And Lindell made a nice Golden Age speech at the ribbon cutting, so I thought that was very appropriate for all of us. Actually, he did a very good speech, Lindell, it was very down-to-earth, and the Golden Age he added into it, so thanks for representing us very well there with that. It was a very, very good speech. Thank you, Lindell.
Thank you. The RC and D Committee, as you perhaps know, does sort of house or provides a base for the Pine Beetle Control Coordinator, and at the last meeting, they were addressed by the Rural Development Director for USDA, and the board decided to cooperate with them in helping merchandise, I guess you'd call it, the energy-saving programs that USDA provides to small towns and small businesses, and so that'll be developing, apparently East River, the East River Electric Cooperative handles that, and West River, the RAAs have chosen not to get too involved, and so as a means of providing a conduit for the public, RC and D stepped in, so. Do we have any executive session stuff?
No, sir. Next would be items from the public, but you do not have executive session today.
Okay, so the next, any other committee reports? Next item is items from the public.
You have some speakers, some young folks in the back. Come on, I know you want to make a speech. You've been laughing a lot in the back, but no speeches today? All righty.
Dan Richard, and I also am in District One. First thing I want to say is, wow, you guys have turned into West Dakota Water Development District. Oh, kind of shocked me.
Is that a positive?
What's that?
That's a positive, right.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Sure. I would like to bring up Mr. Marlowe's. There was a statement made by the state's attorney that I thought was profound. She said when they asked Mr. Marlowe if they could come on his property, and he not only agreed, but he was standing there with a shovel, and when I was looking at the public packet, everything on that public packet- a shovel. And when I was looking at the public packet, everything on that public packet was a directive. There was never one time where it's where it mentioned that they asked Mr. Marlowe. It was always a directive. And, and I think the state's attorney, when she said, when we asked, he said, yeah, come on out. And he had a shovel ready if they want to dig a hole. So, I mean, I don't know how many man-hours are wasted when maybe it would have just been, hey, Mr. Marlowe, can we come out and look? I don't know. I don't know that. All I got is what's sitting back there on the, in the package. But what I, what, the other thing I'd like to say is to Commissioner Buskerud, who's gone, and Commissioner Farabee, is that the statements about, at some point, somebody's going to have to start saying no to these government handouts. And there's been more than one speech given from these perch about government spending out of control. And, but every time it comes down and hits Pennington County, where the first ones writing letters, wanting to know where our money's at. So, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else who wishes to comment before the commission? If not, someone have a creative motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to have a very, very short executive session for personnel matters.
Did it have to be noted on the agenda?
It's already on there. Personnel issue, and I think that's probably standard, but I would like a very, very brief meeting to talk personnel.
Would you like the Human Resources Director present?
I would, no. I only want the four of us. Buskerud, if he wants to join us. No, it's, it's a commission matter.
So, Mr. Chair, it is standard when we discuss personnel matters. To keep us out of, of trouble as a commission, that we have our deputy state's attorney and our, our human resources director. And I would be unwilling to discuss personnel without both of them in the room.
Is that the process and procedure, Lindell, that we have on the, okay. So, I would agree to George's, what George wants to do if that could happen, George, because we want to follow the process and procedure on that.
Do we have a motion, then?
I move a going executive session.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Well, then, before we adjourn, I guess I'll just do it in open.
May we, Mr. Chair, could we wait to have the state's attorney and human resources director here?
He was just chair, well, who, who does Jay work for? And that's, that's what I want to go to an executive session for. So, we'll just do it in the open. Do each of the five of us give him direction, or do we have to majority? How, how does this work?
A moment.
All the department heads, do they work for all five of us, or for a majority of us? I, I'd like to know from my own edification, the elected officials, that's a whole different ballgame. I can talk to them, whatever I want to, whatever I want to talk to them about. But the department heads and the deputy state's attorney, I'd like to know what authority I have or don't have in talking to the department heads and the deputy state's attorney. That's what I want to go to an executive session for. So, if it's not an executive session, then we'll, then we'll talk about it right here.
If, it's probably one of those questions where you would get.
Ten answers for, probably.
And that probably is based on our individual perspective of what we became when we became elected officials. The function of this unit, because of the mixed nature of department heads, elected and non-elected, is, is a challenge. And if the board of commissioners, individually and collectively, don't recognize the importance of functioning in such a way that you respect the department head, whether they're elected or appointed, and that each of us walks in and demands their attention and pursues our agenda without consideration for the entire operation in that department, I think is subject to some examination. And you, with your military experience, perhaps has more background in that regard than any of us. And so, as we go along, if, if you want to have some informal discussions about this, I'd be happy to participate.
Well, obviously, I'd like to have the entire board's opinion, the way I see it. And we're just, we're open, so we're open. If all five of us are telling Jay what to do, and, and I say, ask him one thing, and Deb says another thing, and Ron says another thing, he's obviously torn. And the other department heads probably not quite so much, but, but, and he's not a department head as such, but he's, he's our, our goal-to guy for, for doing this, that, and the next thing. And I like it out in the open, before I'm accused of saying, well, you demand such and such. I, I'd like to know where, where I stand. Now, if, if the rest of you want to know where you stand, then we all ought to get together and, and talk it through. And I think we should be talking this in executive session. It's a personnel matter without the HR person and without the deputy state's attorney. But it's the five of us that are setting policy for how we interact with those. And what I say, elected officials, they're a whole different ballgame. Each of us can talk to them any way they want to, and they can tell all five of us to go to hell if they want to. They were elected. But the department heads work for us.
Well, I think we work as a team.
Well.
And if you tell Jay something, and it's on the same, if you're asking stuff on agenda, I told, I think he's going to tell us all the same answers. So, I don't see Jay telling me something that he didn't tell you. In fact, he, he'll tell me. I told Nancy the same thing. I told Lindell. He called me the other day, and he wanted to know what his opinion. But, but there is, there is something I, I wanted to bring up. If I tell Jay to go look up stuff, and it takes him three days to work on it, maybe that should be a board decision. If it takes a question of Jay, and it takes him a few minutes to look it up, or he knows the answer, that's different. I think when, their time is just as important as ours. So, we had that issue at the city when one person wanted an issue, or had an issue with something, and it took them, it would have took them man-hours of a lot. And then we ended up, as a board, going, okay, we, we can't do that. We, we should do it as a team if we're going to go past a certain amount of hours of time. Does that make sense? But I believe, to keep it out in the open, if you're saying, if we're asking Jay something, and it's on the, the agenda, or if it's not, it's on just a variance that you asked him, it's good information for all of us to know. I don't think you did anything wrong by that, George. It was good. It's good information. It's when you're doing things that have nothing to do with our agenda and what your commission that might cause them, I don't know, disruption or whatever. Or if it's time-consuming to the point where how much of their time is just as valuable as ours.
You know, Mr. Chair, I have every confidence that Jay Alderman is able to tell each and every one of us when something is inappropriate. I have every confidence. And I believe that we, as commissioners, should be willing to accept that. He is very experienced. He understands what happens in county government and how it should be conducted. And I feel that this is really, would never have been an appropriate executive committee discussion. And I am thankful to do it out in the open. But again, I think that you're picking on one person, and whether they are able to handle this, they are.
I'm, I'm looking at it as more, are you looking for a process, George, or are you looking for, to pick on someone? Because if you're looking for a process, I think that's good discussion. If you're looking to go after a certain person, then that's not good. But if you're looking for a process, I think in anything we do, there should be a process. So, are you looking for process, or just to, just to pick on a staff member?
I, I think I was very clear. And if I wasn't, then I'll make myself as clear as I can.
Yes, sir.
All the department heads, appointed department heads work for five of us. And Jay's not a department head, but he kind of acts that way after a fashion. So, just leave him out of the mixture. The department heads, and there's, I don't know how many of them, that we appoint, they take directions from all five of us, or how do we want to proceed? That was, that's, that's what I wanted personnel, executive session for.
Respond to that. And you don't need an executive session. Every elected official has done one thing, and that is, they have accomplished influencing enough people to put them in office, with or without qualifications. The department heads that are appointed, first of all, have to meet a job description and the prerequisites regarding that job through HR and the system that we have in place. So, the odds of a, an appointed department head being qualified and capable and equipped to deliver a service are greater than an elected official. And in that respect, if any one of us five think we are the boss, we don't understand the structure of department heads, the responsibilities that they carry, and the employees that they mobilize and deliver services to the public. So, individually, we are nothing but people who occupy a seat of making policy, making policy. And from there, the policy is delivered by whatever specific focus it has. Now, if I am incorrect, please tell me.
Let me put it to you this way. The five, the ten elected, five.
Am I, am I incorrect?
Well, you're not totally correct. You're incorrect from the standpoint of, of the other elected officials. They work for the people like us, like we. They were elected. So, their oversight comes from the ballot box. The appointed department heads don't have a ballot box, and there has to be some oversight. I'm sorry if I bring my, my background into play, but everybody has a boss. We have a boss, and that's the ballot box. The appointed department heads, we, we are their boss. And just because we appointed them doesn't mean that they're always going to perform up to the standards that we expect of them. There's, every, everybody has a boss. And from that standpoint, I totally disagree with you.
So, what solution are you looking for, George? What, what solution here are you looking for? I mean, what, where are you going with this, and what policy or procedure would you like?
My number one issue was that, that if I go talk to a department head and investigate, and here again, you and I have almost all constituents that are affected by county government, except taxation. And that's a big except. But, so I go look into a matter. I don't want to be accused of harassing an appointed department head. And I, I will not go, except in rare circumstances, below the department head. That's the way I operate. That's the way I learn things. Okay?
So, if you're doing that with respect and, and their time.
But, excuse me.
You're allowed to do that. It seems pretty appropriate.
Respect is relative. You know, we need to somehow, as a board, agree as to what liberty, what discretion we have when we come and talk to department heads and ask them to do something.
Lindell just told you, unless I say, unless it's time, unless it's time-constraining, then I think you should bring it to the board. If it takes them two weeks or a month, I think it shouldn't be by your direction. It should by, be by the board's direction.
So, that's, we're having a discussion. How many, how many constituents do you have?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haddockock.
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, I've got the floor.
May I interrupt? You know, if you look, have you read your code of conduct? It's pretty clear here how to treat our employees, and how we, as a commissioner, should. And if you don't want to, you don't want to follow that kind of treatment, then probably you are going to be approached. But if you are treating them appropriately, you're probably going to be fine.
Follow the process and procedure, George. What's on that paper will tell you. The new procedure we have will tell you. Basically, it's respect, George, on both sides.
Before I was interrupted, how many, how many constituents do you have? Commissioner Haddockock, Commissioner Troutman, Commissioner Buskerud, I'd ask you to check into planning zoning matters for you.
You know, Mr. Chair, he is, this is going to go nowhere, because George wants to have a way to work around how he treats our employees. And I am not going to give you that. So, as far as I'm concerned, you gave a great answer. Deb gave a great answer. We're done. We've given you direction.
Well, thank you very much. And now, hopefully, we're being recorded. So, understand that I raised.
I definitely are. And I will be looking forward to people looking at what this has said today.
I raised the issue, you know, one thing you learn at a pretty young age, you can only have one boss. And this is a unique situation, and I'm looking for guidance as to how to go forward when I interact with department heads. As an example, will it, and this antenna thing? Now, I, I'll go talk to him and the building committee and ask him to come to the next building committee. His understanding, as an example, is that you can't put any things on the roof, building of this, the roof of this building. Well, if that's incorrect, then, then I should have the opportunity to go deal with him. There's all kinds of things that we need, or I would like the permission of the other four to, to have some discretion without getting called on the carpet. Thank you. And that's the end of the discussion. Thank, thank you very much. I make a move, motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on.
Buskerud is gone. Farabee?
Yes.
Haddockock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. We adjourn.